Good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order. And we start off with any comment from the public? Moving on to the Chair's report for the good of the organization, I have two things just to mention. One is in the school committee packet, you'll see the reconfigured or recalculated weighted voting chart. It shows how the reflects how enrollment has changed and affects our voting. Also, the percent of our weights that our votes carry. Just remind also, school committee members, that in July, that's our reorganization meeting, and we'll be voting for officers, new officers of the organization. And so if anyone is interested in being a chair, a vice chair, or a clerk, be prepared to let us know at the next in the July meeting, so we'll have the elections then. And then, thirdly, but most important, we want to say, we don't want to say goodbye to Carrie, but we so-called must, because Carrie's decided she wants to leave us. Not fair.
I chose not to be appointed to a fourth term.
And so we'll take a little, not an official recess, but we'll cut the cake, and there's a bouquet of flowers for you, an arrangement of flowers on the table for you.
And I said I saw the blue ones as soon as I walked in, but it wasn't until I went to talk.
You realize, and we left, I heard you. We left the flowers in the box so that you could carry it out more easily.
Thank you very much.
So. I think we're, I'm not going to make a--
I won't make a big spiel.
Good.
But I will say, I think the most important things I did for Minuteman and the school committee were done within my first five years. But I'm very glad I stayed through the last three, because I got to see it all work out. And it's a very friendly, nice group to work with now, and for that reason, I'm leaving happy with what's here now.
Good. Well, you made a major contribution to the school committee.
I've put in way more years than I ever thought of.
So, let's break and have some cake?
Hey, we don't get voted in, right?
No. Executive decision.
No, you'll feel like my replacement. He is the fellow who was at the last meeting, former town manager of Acton, Steve Liddell. And we're meeting, Kevin has agreed to meet with us, so we can be in--
We'll just pass it over.
Let's cut the cake, and have a little cake.
Because I hope to get to go out to the finance side, too. Do I have to cut it in the way of your thinking?
We'll cut it and just pass it.
Okay.
That's good.
Yes.
Who's taking over the weighted voting?
Well, I don't know, but I did update the FFI 20 templates already for whoever does it.
Who is the what?
Not me, but you.
I think Jennifer was willing to pay.
But it has to be that lady back.
The one thing I wasn't in it to do was--
I thought we were going to light candles or something, but it's Nancy.
I didn't figure out a way to get the vote to approve borrowing, show up as a no vote in her place.
While the cake is being passed around, I'd like to introduce Nancy, Dr. Nancy Hool, who, I'm not quite sure of your title, Nancy, but I--
I'll introduce her.
All right. But you're directing of the Minuteman Technical Institute, who will tell us all about the institute, how it relates to Minuteman High School and the school committee. Welcome, Nancy.
So Nancy, I agreed to introduce Nancy, so you know a little bit about who she is, and then she'll take over on this brief overview of what the Minuteman Technical Institute is, what it's becoming, and I know there's some questions and discussion that we should have about it. So just Nancy Hool is related to our former principal. She married his brother, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And even though Nancy went to Penn State, I did not really know her until she came to work for us. She has a PhD in workforce education and development from the Pennsylvania State University. Her BA is from SUNY Geneseo County, and her MS in vocational and industrial education is from Penn State. We are Penn State.
It is.
She comes to us with experience from one of the silos I talk about in the Department of Labor. They have this whole language of discussing about training, workforce training, whether it's adult basic training. And even though we're doing the same things, the language that's used by the Department of Labor has been somewhat of a barrier for integrating programs and collaborating and partnerships. And Nancy has had experience with JTPA, John Training Partnership Act, used to be a pot of money that we could access. In my early days as a director, I accessed JTPA money through the Hampden County Regional Employment Board in the western part of the state. She's been a school counselor, a district level, and a building level administrator. She was the state director of the Rhode Island Skills USA organization, and she currently still serves as an adjunct professor at Pittsburgh. And so I just wanted to give you that background of, we're very fortunate, I think, to have Nancy as the executive director of the Minuteman Technical Institute. And I'll let her talk a little bit about what the institute is, what we've been doing, where we're going, and what we need in the future. You want to use that?
So one of the mutual professors that Dr. Bokwulu and I had at Penn State one day called me a luddite, and I think that's very accurate, after I looked it up in an old-fashioned dictionary. So technology and I sometimes get along. It's a strange relationship. So what is a technical institute? And the definition for a technical institute is provided to us through Mass General Law, Chapter 74, Section 37A. And, you know, if there's a predetermined need beyond the secondary level, then school committees and districts are able to design programs to prepare students for greater opportunities for employment in a variety of areas. The governance for a technical institute is very much the same as it is for other Chapter 74 programs, secondary Chapter 74 programs. There are, however, some differences. One is that there's typically, more often than not, a dedicated executive director focusing solely on the post-secondary institute. A program advisory committee is developed to guide and steer the development of the technical institute. And the Council on Occupational Education, which is also called CO, is another governing body and accreditation agency that works with a number of post-secondary institutes across the nation. And it's also a U.S. Department of Education requirement to be affiliated and accredited by the Council on Occupational Education if your institute will be offering financial aid to your students. And again.
The other one.
Okay, there we go. So what is the Council on Occupational Education? It's a governing body and accreditation agency that's been in existence since 1971, and currently they're involved with or oversee accreditation for 574 schools. And under that umbrella of post-secondary institutions, there are 497 non-main campuses. So they will accredit your main campus, and also they need to accredit your offsite campuses or non-main campuses. They're in 40 states, as well as in the District of Columbia, and it's nationally-recognized and accepted standards that they look for and that they accredit us to meet. Once we meet their standard, then we are accredited through Council on Occupational Education. What are the benefits of that? Again, nationally-recognized standards, so that when you claim to be CO-accredited, that is a language that other agencies understand. Again, another benefit is that it's a federal Department of Education requirement to be accredited by the Council on Occupational Education if you wish to offer financial aid to your students. The process of offering financial aid is a multi-step process. Currently, the Minuteman Technical Institute is getting ready for the face-to-face training that will be held in July. Sonia Vetrano from the business office and myself will attend a five-day training in Boston. We've both done the online training, and then this is one of the last pieces before we are fully approved to offer financial aid to our students. And then it's additional resource for quality program attainment. And we have a really nice relationship with CO. They're very much available by phone, very much available by email. I've had a lot of questions in the last seven and a half months, and they are very receptive and helpful. So it's a good partnership to have. I will be attending a conference, please don't be jealous, in Biloxi, Mississippi, in July with CO, and that's called their summer meeting. A little more about that later.
Quick question. On the financial aid, is that with private sector lenders, or is that a government?
It's the federal financial aid, so FAFSA, Pell Grants, federal student aid, things like that. So the timeline for CO accreditation actually began almost a year ago with Mary Ann Hamm and Allison Camerata, who's here with us this evening. They did a really great job pulling a lot of resources together to get MTI resuscitated and rejuvenated for the district. And they attended the Candidate Training 1 session in Atlanta, Georgia, last year. In October, they hosted CO personnel for an initial site visit, where folks came up from Atlanta to take a look at the facilities and review documentation, very similar to a NIESK evaluation. In November of that same year, Mrs. Hamm, Ms. Camerata, and myself attended Candidate Training 2 in Jacksonville, Florida, where we participated in sections and seminars specific to the next steps in the process, so very prescriptive agenda. Later that same month, we received notification of approval that we were voted in to move forward with our candidacy. In July, visiting them in Biloxi, Mississippi, to get additional training in the next steps, hosting a site visit, gathering documentation, and preparing the program for that final review. And then in fall 2020, staff from the Council on Occupational Education will come to the new Minuteman Technical Institute and the new Minuteman High School and look at our programs, look at our documentation, review our procedures and processes, and also be able to tour the new building. So what's moving ahead for next year? Did this change? No? Okay. Before we can talk about moving ahead, let's talk about where we've been. So currently, for the 2018-19 program, there were six MTI courses with 28 students. Four programs with 17 students across those four programs were held during the day, and there were two programs in the evening with 11 students across those two programs. Of that number, 28, 15 completed their program of study, nine are working in the field, one student is pursuing an additional certification, one student is working outside the field, and four are actively searching. Those four students who are actively searching had the assurance of myself and their instructors that should they need additional assistance, we're available by email, we're available by phone, they're able to come in, and we will do their resume, we will help them make initial contact. I've been forwarding email blasts that I get from Indeed to these students, if they're specific to their field of study, in the hopes of helping them attain employment. We have 10 students returning, three in advanced manufacturing and seven in electricity. Due to the move and the quickness with which the building has been completed, I think it was a little bit faster than some predicted, we've had to put a hold on our two evening programs, because the materials, the equipment, the tools, the supplies were being packed away, and there was nothing for them to work on. So a phone call to DESI, a phone call to CO, a lot of discussion, and we decided that we would suspend those two programs, and students will join us back in the fall. We had three non-completers of the 28. Two aren't working in the field in which they started training, so those are positive outcome placements for us, and one student separated from the program due to long-term illness. Those students who were with us for the 2018-19 academic year were eligible to complete the following certification, the industry-recognized credentials. All programs for OSHA, all programs in first aid, CPR, and AED training. Some programs, specific to their trade area, received hot work certification. Our cosmetology students have all achieved their 1,000-hour mark and were signed off to take the state licensing board exam. Automotive students took multiple NATF certification exams, and our metal fab and joining students were trained, tested, and passed, and therefore received their American Welding Society D1.1 certification. So a lot of good things, along with their certifications of completion, they have other industry-recognized certifications. And these certifications will be offered to our next round of students. So recruitment and marketing for the 2018-19 academic year. Again, over the last seven months, I've done a lot of listening and a lot of observing, and we have updated the website to make it reflect the adjustments that we've needed to make to our schedule. We've updated printed materials to reflect the same. We've done outreach to local high schools and attendance at post-secondary and education career fairs. I attended six of those. We've provided tours to five groups from outside the building, and we have a social media presence. It's hard to say specifically which is the most impactful, but I would put the personalized tours at the top of the list. That seems to be most impactful when folks have questions. For 2019-2020, we're moving all of our programming into the evening. So from 4:30 to 10:00, Monday, Wednesday, Friday evenings, MTI courses will be running. We're offering advanced manufacturing, automotive technology, cosmetology, culinary arts, electricity, and metal fab and joining. Again, the dates and times, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from 4:30 to 10:00, with breaks in between. And some programs will be in the building on Saturday. Electricity likes to be in on Saturday morning, so they'll do a Monday, Wednesday, Saturday schedule. Cosmetology will do a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, up to 300 hours for the students. And then after that 300-hour mark, we will revisit whether we do an abbreviated Friday with a clinical on Saturday to allow the students the opportunity to work on live models once they reach that 300-hour attainment mark. We'll also have a career development curriculum and the components included within that. Our math enhancement, we do Microsoft training, entrepreneurship, professional networking, establishing a professional social media presence for networking and job seeking. We'll have industry panels, roundtable meetings, and we'll spread that over the course of the 10, 11 months that students are with us, for a set time each month, so that they know it's either the second Wednesday of each month, or the first Monday of each month, that they know they'll have dedicated time for career development. And when I speak with students and parents initially, and describe to them this component of our program, they are very excited about that, and I think this makes us separate and distinct from other Chapter 74 post-secondary programs. This does get a lot of question development and excitement from our applicants. And then we will have student support services through the Mass Hire program, specifically their career centers, also TAA and WIOA money, which is, as Dr. Bokwulu said, the language of workforce development agencies. Depending on the student situation, they are able to receive transportation support, childcare support, financial support, tuition support. So we'd like to build those relationships with two-way communication. The other component to the programming will be instructor training. To get everyone on the same page, I'd like our instructors to be clear about what are the staff's expectations, review our calendar. You become trained in ASCAN, which is our student information management item, and have a tour of the lab space that might have to be on hold until another date. And then again, in August, review the ASCAN training so that they're able to take attendance more accurately. Grades, present report cards and progress reports, which are sometimes necessary for those supporting agencies. We'll review the student handbook, we'll overview payroll information, and discuss again the accreditation process. What do we need to become the region's top-of-mind academic and training campus? We need a robust marketing and recruitment plan, an enhanced social media presence, and dedicated space for auxiliary classes, which starts then to fold into the vision of the district, where we have an academic component. Maybe someone is at MTI, and they become so interested in learning, or they find something new about their particular trade area that they want to add an academic component to that. We will be able to provide that to them. Counseling services, again, through Mass Hire, whether it be employment readiness skills or employment-seeking skills. We would like to have a satellite office for each of the three workforce boards on our campus, so that students can access that information more readily, as well as additional co-located programming, which will develop as we understand the needs, the growing needs of our student population. So who's going to help with this? Everybody's going to help with this, but I put together a little advisory committee, and we have some fun people on this advisory committee, many from, you know, try to spread it across many different silos to get a lot of input and feedback. So, for example, Monique Galat is with Gentle Giant Moving and Storage, and that might seem to be a strange, you know, how did that get into the mix? Well, Monique does a lot of hiring of young people, and she has a great connection with, you know, a great finger on the pulse of what they ask, what they look for, what they want, what they do, what works best for them. So that's really great input. Brady McCarron from Enterprise Bank, very good with financial information. Just a really great group of people. And we had our first meeting on May 21st, and I planned an agenda for two hours, because I didn't want to take up too much time, and we got through two things, and they requested a second meeting. So we'll have a follow-up meeting next Tuesday. So a very enthusiastic group, ready to work and help us move forward with our next round of students. Any questions? Oh, gosh. Okay.
My question is, does anybody outside the institute's administration have a say over who is accepted, eligible to attend? And part two, is there any advantage for a student whose home community is a member of Minuteman District?
So the answer to your first question, is there any outside influence on who is accepted in the program?
I mean, it's not, it's post-secondary graduates, some DESI shouldn't have anything to do with it.
No.
But I wonder if there's anybody else out there who does.
No, no. And the benefit for an in-district post-secondary applicant is the difference in tuition. That's their benefit.
Are the instructors employees of a Minuteman, are the contractors, or what's--
It's a combination, it's a combination of both. So the jobs are posted on school spring, and anyone who's interested in applying, apply. And we came up with some really great candidates, and at this point, we have a retired automotive professional and retired teaching gentleman, he's going to do our auto service technology. Alex Peters, who was our daytime advanced manufacturing teacher, was interested, and we've asked him to be the MTI.
And are they employees, sort of like a standard Minuteman employee, where they, where they're eligible for the benefits?
No, they're contracted with a separate contract, you know, no retirement benefits, none of that.
Yeah, we were, so you're clear, we were very clear with the attorneys that these positions are not part of the collective bargaining.
Okay, right. That's exactly how it's--
Separate hourly rate.
Okay. And the age distribution of the 28 students, what is that?
So the age distribution of the students just finishing was anywhere from a very young 18 to a very mature 54. The age variation of our current applicants is from a more mature 19 to a very mature 47. So that's a person.
So what's your ideal enrollment?
So my ideal enrollment, so we have six programs, and I'd like eight students in each program. I think that's a good number for one teacher to handle. It gives a really nice one-to-one relationship that's safe, it gives students a chance to have individualized instruction and attention, and also later on in the course of the program, it allows for students, once their skills have built up, to do some more specialized or individualized projects. So my ideal enrollment would be 48. If we go up to 60, that would be great. If we go up to 72, I think that would be awesome as well. Go here.
I have like 20 questions.
Great.
So give me the profile of the students who are coming to this program. What is their motivation to come here? Who are, what are the students who are coming?
So the students that are separating from us, that have just finished the program, the majority of them are coming because they've always wanted to do this, they never had the chance.
Are they looking for a career change? Is that what, is it just an interest?
With that group, it was both.
Both.
It was both. A career change in the sense of, you know, they were working part-time in a field that they weren't really in love with, and they've always wanted to take cosmetology, so here they were to take cosmetology.
How do these programs compare with the high school programs? In what way are they similar, in what way are they different, or are they just like not comparable at all?
I would say they're similar in the sense that the post-secondary programs do follow the DESI Chapter 74 curriculum guidelines. The difference is, you know, where the student is coming from. It's a little more personal, I think. It's a different relationship between the teachers.
How much do they age differ?
It varies. It varies. So the tuition varies across course and across residency. So in-district folks have one rate, out-of-district folks another rate, out-of-state folks a third rate.
An example would be...
So go anywhere from $7,600 up to, we just had a young man pay in full for next year today for advanced manufacturing, $12,400.
She showed me the check very proudly. I bet. Okay, so now, so these teachers are not our, could be Minuteman staffers, but they're often not good. So how are we going to be, but they're going to impact our reputation more than the other, you know, if they're not great. So what is the mechanism for supervision, making sure they have good people, make sure that as they go along, we can supervise and make sure that we're ensuring that our reputation stays very strong in this area?
So again, as I explained earlier, everything went out through SchoolSpring, and the majority of the people that we interviewed, with one exception, are Chapter 74 certified teachers already. So we wanted to have that standard. We're not going to take upon licensed teachers. Through the interview process, which was conducted by myself and then Minuteman teachers, daytime teachers, in the trade program that the person was assigned for...
So Minuteman teachers were involved in...
Yeah, Minuteman teachers were involved. Thank you very much for clarifying. And, you know, they had questions, we had tough questions, you know, how are you going to work with the daytime teachers? How will you help roll this program? What is your, what is your perspective on teaching adult students? Tell us your experience. What are your references? So they went through a process.
And the supervision of these teachers, is that your job or is it something...
That is, that is my job, and I will be taking a refresher supervision and observation course in the fall.
And a question for Kevin. Financially, how does this impact? Let's say that it's a few years from now, and we reach our goal of 58, 60, 70 students. Financially, what impact does this have on us? And how we, I know that the answer to this, yes, you'll look at the numbers, but can you give us some insight into how this would work for us?
Yes, it'd be very similar to any other program where we run out of revolving account. The postgraduate program runs out of revolving account. This post-secondary program will also run out of that. So when Dr. Hul was talking about some of the enrollment targets and how we were setting our tuition rates, we were mindful about trying to make sure that the programs could be self-supportive, and any, any excess tuition that's generated within the revolving fund can be reinvested back into, into the post-secondary program. So it'll stay within that fund.
So we're comfortable with the financial aspect of this program?
Yes, I think one of the real benefits to this program that prompted us to pursue it, from a fiscal point of view, was the eligibility of the Pell Grants, some of the other financial aid. I think that that makes it a lot more affordable for students, and it has a benefit to make sure, from a fiscal point of view, it works Minuteman's favor as well. And we're investing an awful lot of time to get that financial aid certification complete, so.
Can I just answer, we had one additional question about who pays for this. So some of it is self-pay, the student or the family pays. Some of it is through the Mass Hire, or LOA, or trade acts, or state funding. And we've had a number of families use their college account for 51A or B savings plan. So there are a variety of ways.
They decide to pay you some of that money for this program?
They decide to take the tuition out of that savings program and apply it towards this.
So just to follow up with Kevin, I mean, when you're talking about the favorability, it means that the Pell Grants make sure that we get paid, and if, if in subsequent years there's a default on the loan, that's not our, we're, there is no clause...
That's how I understand the program.
It won't, it won't be...
Correct.
...at risk.
What I'd like to know information about, what is the relationship between the institute and the Minuteman District, or whatever? I don't quite understand what the relationship is. Who, is there a legal connection between the two? Is it, is it an adjunct, is the institute an adjunct to Minuteman District? I'm not quite clear.
It's part of our district. It's that simple. The technical institute is part of the Minuteman Regional Vocational School District because we are a Chapter 74 program. Under that umbrella, you can have technical institutes, secondary programs.
So the district has created the institute a few years ago.
So there is an oversight responsible by the school committee, which is the heart of that function, I think.
And through the revolving funds, this whole account.
That I knew about, yeah.
We talked about that at home, so.
Alice.
So with regards to Pell Grants and self-work, are we able to track whether they do defaults on them, or whether, what the financial impact is on them? You can read about it in paper all the time, so.
That is a great question, and I will ask that in the July training and get back to you. I believe it will somehow connect to us with a default rate. I believe that if someone, you know, in the next couple of years were to look us up and see that we offer financial aid, there would be a way for them to determine our default rate and things of that nature.
Jeff? What is the superintendency as the primary benefits of this institute's Minuteman program? What is the superintendency? Yeah, the primary benefits of this Minuteman...
What is your vision?
Well, if you look at our campus, this is part of our campus vision, to be able to create a campus that's dedicated to lifelong learning. We'll have some students that will probably, when we develop the relationships with Middlesex Community College to a greater level, the UMass Lowell, the Graduate School of Engineering, will be able to interface our approved MTI programs with those post-secondary institutions where students would be able to achieve, you know, associate degrees, bachelor's degrees, and components of their master's degree, all here on campus. So when you start to think of our students graduating from Minuteman High School, they can also start to see themselves as possibly moving forward as MTI. You know that student we had who graduated Friday with her associate's degree in Middlesex Community College, a week before she got her high school diploma? This is a way to do that that's more accessible, and I think easier on the kid, both in terms of their wallet and investment, and their time spent.
So they get further along in their career path much earlier and below the price of their...
All from Minuteman, yeah. When we think about campus development, this is going to guide some of them. We're hoping these partners will see MTI as a partner, that they want to be involved with not just the high school, but MTI as well.
Pam, and then Sue.
I'm just curious in terms of, you know, without sort of, you know, certainly Minuteman has an incredible number of oversight safeguards to ensure quality. What do you have in place sort of to do the same thing, to ensure that you're continuing, you know, to be having a program that's the quality that you want?
First, I would say my own high standards. Input from district staff, which includes superintendent, as well as input and guidance from the Council on Educational Education. So they will really be draped out.
It used to be in the old days that NEASC would evaluate these programs as well. NEAS, they had a post-secondary, well, the CTSI was Career Technical Secondary Institutions. Now, they used to include post-secondary institutions. So that's what, one of the reasons our technical institute sort of fell off, because NEAS was no longer involved, and we didn't have the horses really to get the COA thing actually working for us. We also knew that we'd be in new facilities. It was sort of been a, you know, the time is right now to really strengthen it. And Dr. Hul, I think, is the person to it, along with all of our other staff who've been working on it.
Sue?
Yeah, this seems like an excellent educational program, and really good for students, but part of me is, has to ask, a huge amount of energy that goes into this, people time, people energy, Minuteman energy, school committee oversight, all kinds of things, and to do all that for 60 students a year, in a program that may or may not break even, I'm a bit concerned. I can see the launch run benefits, but I also see some risks and some...
Well, there's risk in everything, but I think there's greater risk in not doing anything right now because of the needs that we see in the region in terms of workforce development. There's no, there's very few places like the Minuteman Technical Institute that our kids can go to. And you think about all the kids in the communities, we tried advertising the gap year concept, remember that?
Yeah.
The gap year. This is very accessible to kids who are maybe completing college in our district, our home, have no direction, maybe have a whole lot of debt. And our, some of our marketing and focus group activity that we did, we found that that sort of student was really underserved in this, in this region, maybe in the country for those.
So that sounds cool. Two of my kids were, could have used this absolutely for a couple of years.
This line?
Let's make it from there. Why not raise the tuition? Why not charge higher tuition?
We may, we'll see what the market will, will put there. We're not spending that much per, you know, you know, eight, eight kids are bringing in $85,000, $90,000, or maybe spending $4,000, $5,000 on the teacher and, you know, materials, a couple thousand. So you're, it's pretty good for folk in terms of enterprise budget. It's not like we're spending a million dollars here.
Well, there are different ones on the line. But obviously, it's about that. I just...
Karen?
We've talked about it before, but to, sort of to that point, to what extent is the program helping to absorb some of the ongoing facilities or administrative costs for...
There's certainly the possibility that we can do that, much like we do with the facility rental revolving accounts. I think we're at the infancy stage here, the startup stage. It certainly could. I think, though, the main intent is to make sure, once, once the program sells sustaining, that we can reinvest in the program to make sure that we're maintaining the standard that we need to attract and run a high-quality program and attract students that are looking for that.
In general, we're adding some staffing in orders on a contract basis, so as needed, no long-term commitments, and we're adding the supplies. But the facility, the equipment is substantially in place already, is that...
It's here, yep.
Plus, plus a director.
Yep. And to Ed's point, the needs of the labor market, the employers here, I think it makes a good triangle that ultimately will elevate the reputation, the emphasis, the importance that the area sees, not necessarily just Minuteman, but a vocational education. You know, we don't just drop them off by the side of the road when they're, when they've gotten here for years.
Alice, let's, this be the last question, but go ahead, Alice.
I want to preface my question by saying I'm remembering sitting in the training room in the school committee used to meet up there, and two commissioners ago, David Driscoll, chatted in Minuteman about how we should have 13th year. Do you remember that? He sat there, it was quite an interesting meeting for some reason, but he did say that, the 13th year, so this is kind of the 13th year. There are a lot of kids who need 13th year. How often do you envision reporting to the school committee on what's going on with the Minuteman Institute? How do the financials push into the reporting of this, by the finances?
I think the financials get, because they're quarterly, yes.
Correct.
And a report to the school committee can be annually or semi-annually, meaning twice a year, rather than every year.
Yeah, I like the semi-annual.
Biennial, please.
Is that right?
Biennial is...
Anyway, did you get your question answered?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very, very much. It sounds like a really promising venture, and I'm very happy to hear a lot of information about it tonight, so thanks a lot. Moving on, under the superintendent's report, approval for the appointment of Amy Perrow as assistant superintendent. Do I hear a motion? Ed, you wanted to...
Sure, well, Amy's here, and as we talked about back in, I think, March, there was been a reorganization. We had a couple applicants internally. Amy's experience here at Minuteman, as well as elsewhere, her leadership training, and her role as a special ed director has been important for me in terms of offering her this new role going forward. As the title change includes the word superintendent, I ask the school committee for their approval and, and if Amy's here, if she wants, if you want to ask her any questions. Her resume's in your packet, I believe on page seven.
Right. Anyone? Sue?
I have a question, but it's not directly to you, it's about the decision itself. Salary listed is higher than the assistant superintendent in Arlington, who has 5,000 students and hundreds of staff people, and wondering how would you like that sample?
It's a, we looked at what the other assistant superintendents were making in regional vocational technical schools in the area, and that was what we negotiated.
Many of them are large, and they're large.
That's true.
More responsibility there. It seems like, it seems like an unusually high salary compared to what I know from public
I think there are traditional superintendents who would say that every salary at a regional vocational school is higher than the comparable salary at a traditional school.
Any other questions, Thomas, Alice?
Will the assistant superintendent still be overseeing the spread program?
Yes, we're not replacing this director of special ed position. Amy is going to be doing both positions.
So she'll be doing one and a half jobs?
Yes.
Pam?
I think I missed, so what, what will the responsibilities be?
She's overseeing, I had a, you remember the org chart that I had?
Yeah, I can see it, I don't remember what all the little boxes said.
She'll be overseeing the day-to-day operations of the secondary school, including special ed, guidance, curriculum assessment, teacher evaluation. And just to, you know, part of this reorganization was because of Kevin's retirement, and we're not, we're not adding an assistant superintendent for finance, we have posted for a business manager position.
Any other questions or comments? Jeff?
Just a technical question. Because this isn't a assistant superintendent, that's why you're coming to us, otherwise it wouldn't even come to us at all.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that correct? Yes.
Okay. All in favor? It's unanimous?
Thank you.
800.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, supervisor of attendance position.
Yeah, I wanted to bring this to the school committee's attention. On page 16, I believe, there's some, beginning on page 16, there's some information about the position, supervisor of attendance. Well, back, I think, a few years ago, the Department of Ed changed some of the licensing requirements around this position and basically eliminated licensure for a supervisor of attendance. And the, we do not have a school attendance officer, but I do have a staff member who's been working for about five years on her bachelor's degree, and you may know her, her name is Cheryl Mixon. She works in the assistant principal's office and deals with attendance on an everyday So the school com- So, the school committee now has the authority to appoint anybody they feel meets the requirements to be a supervisor of attendance. And I am, at some point in the near future, going to be recommending that Cheryl be appointed our supervisor of attendance. She, I think she completes her bachelor's degree in the next week or two, and will have a job description and that sort of thing. It'll be a stipended position, probably four or five thousand dollar stipend, but she really does have the, the skill set and the demeanor. She's done great. You may have heard the principal report on our increase in attendance, our student attendance rates. In large part, that's a, a part of restructuring how we enforce our attendance regulations, and Cheryl is sort of the face of that. She deals with students, she deals with families, sometimes very difficult situations. But as the school committee appoints the school physician and a few other positions, the supervisor of attendance is one of those positions. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Jeff?
My only comment is that the job of tracking down students and situations in which they are not attending school regularly and dealing with that, she has to have a very strong stomach and a very strong emotional state to deal with all those issues. That's a very hard thing to do.
Like a truant officer with a good heart. I was reading into it.
Yeah, that's a good description.
Yeah, in my day, they were called truant officers.
Well, you probably, all your individual communities probably have one, and what you, and the, and Cheryl would be working with those individuals, and we have in the past.
Very good, very good.
But the regional school needs to have one, too.
So you'll keep us up to date about, Alice?
Yes.
I want to say I love the Statue of the Statue of the Dog, Karen.
Okay, staffing update?
As I mentioned, we have two finalists for our business manager position. We have two finalists for the director of communications position. We'll probably be making some recommendations later in the summer. We want, we're focusing on the move right now. And the director of communications finalists, we're developing a, a second round of interviews that have to do with performance. So, we haven't really landed on what we're going to be asking them to do, but it would involve writing a press release, posting a social media, what do you call those? Posts, I guess?
Yes.
And editing, editing some materials. We have appointed Katie Smith, Katie Bouchard, as the assistant director of Career Tech Ed, as Michelle Roach, who was just there, is retiring a year from now, and we wanted to have her available to mentor someone into that role.
Press release, then, maybe the word you look.
Press release, yes.
Okay, so you, we'll hear more about.
Yeah, there may be some recommendations at the July meeting.
Supervisor, superintendent, we'll hear more about that.
Yes.
And go on from there. Okay, any questions? Yes, Jeff?
So, two questions. The first question is, by kind of dragging out this process, are we in danger of losing any of these people who are applying?
No, not from what they've told me.
Okay. And the second one is regarding the director of communications. I think that, those are skills tests, but how can we test the go-getter-ness and idea-ness that we also need in that position? Is that kind of the personal thing? Because that has to be part of it, too, not just the, the skill.
The two finalists have demonstrated that through their initial interviews.
They're satisfied.
The people on the committee were, were satisfied, I think. Pam was on that committee.
They both really need that right here again. Strong.
Anything else?
No.
Neshoba middle school update?
Well, I sent a letter to Brooke Clancy today. Do you have, is there a copy of that letter, Kevin?
I don't have it.
She asked me to give her confirmation of what material, supplies, and equipment would remain in Neshoba, and we did that. And basically, after a review of the expenditures and what we assessed for, it was clear that the equipment had such little value that it was going to remain in Neshoba. As far as they're actually making any decisions, I haven't heard anything, so.
So it's still a go until we hear something official of that behind?
My understanding is the intent of that, of the superintendent is to end the relationship with Minuteman.
Right.
I don't know if she intends to hire the teachers back as part of the Neshoba district or not. So we have some, one of the things we haven't really done yet, because I, it's sort of politically sensitive, maybe I shouldn't even talk about it, but if she does lay off our teachers, there's going to be an expense to us, and we should assess them for that. You know, unemployment costs.
And, and, and any action wouldn't take place until fiscal year twenty-one, right?
Yeah, wouldn't impact the school year coming up in September.
So FY twenty-one?
Yeah.
Okay, anything, any other question? Comment? All right.
So.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Amy's here to talk about the grant that we received for improving student access to behavioral and mental health services grant, and the amount of a hundred and three thousand dollars. There's a, a letter from Polito and Baker on page eighteen, and I don't know, if you want to just give a, you can come up to the table, Amy, and she wrote the grant. We didn't expect to get it, but we got it, and we're, I think we're the highest-funded school in the district, in the state.
She needs a new nameplate.
Yes.
What'd you say, Dave O'Connor?
No.
Probably not.
Oh.
Yeah, so, the grant had a lot of top priorities in it that our district didn't meet, but apparently we wrote a persuasive enough grant that we were funded for the full amount that we asked for. So, that's excellent. The focus of this grant has a lot of small little pieces, but the overarching vision of it is to move the academy development team and academy model forward, focusing on the behavioral and mental health services pieces of it. So deepening the collaboration between teachers and support service providers within the five different pathways we have. So, as we're moving into the new building, really setting up structures where teachers, both academic and vocational, and support services, guidance, can really have meaningful conversations about students, so they can get to know students' strengths and weaknesses. Because we all know how one student acts in one classroom, they may act completely different in another classroom, and teachers have different strategies for reaching students. So, we're really looking to use some of this money for professional development, consultation with community partners, bringing in outside experts, funding for materials that may be needed, including some software, I would say, to analyze student data, trends with attendance, with grades, any sort of data points that we think are important, and we can pick and choose those. So, some of the money will be used for stipends. One sort of large bucket of work will be to develop what these meetings should look like, whether it, what type of tracking system we're going to use, what type of information do we want to know prior to having these meetings about the student. So we're going to design that. And then the second part of it is actually running these meetings, facilitating, having us, identifying someone that, who for the first year will facilitate these meetings and have these difficult conversations that we really need to have in order to best serve the students. That's sort of it in a brief nutshell.
Jim?
This is, this is more of a technical question for Kevin. I, I noticed in the letter, it's a fiscal nineteen and twenty grant. Do we have to spend or encumbr some funds by June thirtieth to be able to collect it? And is that going to take less?
I did not write anything in the grant for fiscal nineteen, so all of our funds are for fiscal twenty.
Okay, great. Jeff? Oh, and then, Sue, I'm sorry.
So, okay, so you have this bucket of money that you can spend this year, but some of the things that you create may be ongoing, which means that in the future, if we want to keep them ongoing, they have to come out of the general budget. So, are the things you, that's, that's what happens a lot of the times, maybe it's not in this time, then the question is, are the things you're going to be creating worth spending general budget funds on in the future?
Absolutely.
I think what this grant allows us to do is, over the course of the year, figure out what works for us and what we institutionalize as best practice. But this is training teachers how to have meaningful conversations, and once we know how to do that, it doesn't cost any more money to continue to have those. If the schedule already allows for us to have common planning time, because that's one of the things that we've already built into our schedule. So, when I wrote this grant, I had to write in it, like, how I would sustain it otherwise. So, I think that for a large majority of what we're going to create, it's going to sustain itself.
Sue?
Could you give us sort of a real-world example of how a student might, how this might work for a given student?
Oh, sure. So, so say a student in programming and web is struggling to turn work in on time, not following with, following along with the curriculum. That teacher, the programming and web teacher, might say to whoever the person is leading their pathway discussion team, say, "I'd like to put Amy Peralta on the list for discussion. I need some help in figuring out what to do next. I just, I know I'm not, the student's not reaching their full potential in my classroom. Can you help me out?" So, this, whatever we decide we would like, we give the programming and web teacher, "Can you fill this out or come prepared to discuss what you've tried, what's worked, what, what hasn't worked?" Like, we're going to establish what those data points are. The programming and web teacher would come to the scheduled meeting, along with the other pathway members. So you'd have the academic teachers there, you'd have the guidance counselor there. If the student has a special education liaison, they'd be there. So the programming and web teacher would talk about whatever the presenting problem is. And then, with all that great expertise at the table and different perspectives, we try to tease it out and come up with an action plan of what we should try, who's going to try it, who's going to be involved. Maybe it's a collaboration between the guidance counselor and, and the programming and web teacher, or the special education liaison. And then, whatever timeframe we decide is the appropriate amount of time, and then we would circle back at a further meeting to see, has it worked? Do we need to tweak it? Are we happy with where we're at? Like, did I answer your question?
It does, and it sounds really great, potentially really great for a lot of students.
Can somebody do that for me?
Right.
Your wife did call the other night.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, thank you, Amy. It sounds like a very worthwhile program to.
Great.
Working with, with students in the school and to help them to become comfortable in their skins and as students, so thank you. Meeting with Commissioner Marley and Cliff Chang, Department of Education, Secondary Education. Ed, Jim and I were there.
Separate meeting.
Pardon me?
Well, there's two meetings, just so we're clear.
Okay.
There was one here about my meeting with, with the commissioner.
Right.
And Cliff, and a bunch of other folks, which was based on this, was based on my wanting to talk to them about access. The second meeting, which we had yesterday with Jeff Wolfson, Cliff Chang, some others at the Department of Ed, which I attended along with Dave and Jim Gamble, was about Jim's windmill. No, 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 no. So, I won't talk about my mess.
Regional agreement.
So, I'm sorry, I had to, no, 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 come on now. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
It was a good meeting, but I won't talk about my meeting, but.
That was the meeting that you endorsed, where we sent, the, the committee endorsed us writing a letter to the commissioner asking for this meeting, for a meeting with him, and he asked that we meet with.
Jeff Wolfson.
Jeff Wolfson and Cliff Chang.
Yeah.
Rather than with, with him, but.
So I'll let Jim.
Jim can talk more about it. I just went, a little bit about the climate of it. I thought that they listened. First of all, Jim's presentation was excellent, was, was excellent, was thorough, comprehensive, clear, as, as always. And I thought that the, the people who were there listened to what was going on, and in fact, they had read it, a lot of what he, what we were talking about. Their questions were good, they were, they were cordial and listening, and I was, I had thought it had positive energy. Of course, you don't know what the, what the bottom line is, but it was, we, I didn't, I used the word we were talking about earlier this evening, that I didn't feel that they stonewalled us in any way. It was, they were open and available, and I felt that we were open and available to them as well, so take it away.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I mean, if you look back at the December letter that we got from DESI, where they were very skeptical that the commissioner would sign off on this, this meeting ended with the deputy, deputy home commissioner saying that they would, that they would continue to take a look at it, and, and in fact, he filed up with some questions for us to follow up with, with them today. And then also just, you know, as you know, this has been a topic for the, you know, for the past year. When I started off with this, I was thinking of it, of the section ten B in the average cost pricing really as a revenue measure for the school, school home committee. The way I was talking about it yesterday, and it's, and it's, and the evolution of my own thinking, at this time, with the new building coming on and the enrollment numbers being strong, it really is tied into our, what, what is our grand strategy for a membership here? You know, are, are you satisfied with the nine-member towns, or do you want, do you want other, other towns to, to either join like Watertown, or, or towns like Belmont, and, and maybe some of the obdeclerents to come back in? And one of the issues, you know, politically in those towns is, is the cost gap between member status and non-member status. So I was, I was sort of presenting it as saying, like, you know, why, why should there be a state policy that encourages these, these towns not to be a member, not to have their own voc, vocal programs? Isn't it a better policy for a town to make a commitment to voc ed? And, and, and that seemed to get, to get some sort of positive reception there. The challenge for me, or us, is that, you know, we're on strongest grounds when, when you take a look at the state law and the regional, regional agreement. The regional agreement says it's our policy to have, have average cost pricing. The state law says that regional voc, school committee has the right to at least propose its own tuition policy. And then, when you, when you go to Malden, you know, that, that the perspective changes, and it's less on what is applicable to Minuteman and what works on a statewide basis. And, and so there was a point where, you know, someone said, "Well, this is not in our regs." I go, like, "Well, it's, this is in our state law, shouldn't it be in our regs?" "Well, it takes time," you know? And, and, and so, the questions are really, you know, for instance, do we use the DESI method of calculating average cost per student on the whole thing, or do we use our average cost pricing, which in our regional agreement is not an operational thing, but it's the average cost to the member town, so it really is up the assessment. And so we have to sort of work through that. But in general, I think the fact that they're open to having a, having a continued conversation and they're, you know, there, there is no one exact path or answer that, 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 that is necessary. I, I think, I think if we just move in this, in this direction, we, we may find something that works. But at the same time, I think we need to sort of figure out, as a committee, what's our, what is our thinking about bringing, bringing in more, more towns, towns as a members, and how to approach that, because it, it sort of is tied in to this, to this, to this topic, or, or else one can drive, one can drive on the other, but they're, but they're both going to have their own life of, life of their own, especially, and I know that when the Belmont School Committee meets next week, that they may actually take a step to, 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 to say that they would like to start to have some informal, informal, informal conversations, just to see what the, what the temperature of, of this body is. So, so it's all tied in.
Anything you want to add, Ed, or any, or any questions from anybody?
Um, no.
Carrie. But other, other, other than he looks forward to working with us on, on this topic in the future, right?
I look forward to working with you?
Yes.
I always do. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, that's, I'll agree with that.
Carrie.
I just wanted to say how Jim has, he, he mentioned the evolution of his own. I just wanted to say how Jim has, he mentioned the evolution of his own thinking. I've seen it up close and more personal as part of the finance subcommittee than you all have, but I want you to know that that is absolutely true. We started off with, you know, some, some very specific things that we didn't all necessarily understand, looking at it from a different context. And I think we have been, he has been extremely receptive to input, gone away and played with his models and come back. And I think in the end, to finance subcommittee, and I hope the rest of the committee is very happy and shares my appreciation. This is not the only case in which he has worked on something. You'll be acting on another one later on this evening. So thank you, Jim. And I hope, I hope for the benefit of Belmont and Minuteman that a way is found forward.
And that you're reappointed as your representative.
And that you're reappointed.
Yes.
Felicity, I'm very confused on where we think we're going to go with this in terms of what decision does the school committee need to make? If we have communities that are willing to come in, just saying what I think, I think they should, anybody should be able to come in as long as they come in on an equal basis with all of us that's here.
That would be something left to us to discuss and to rule on. There were, there were no, in what was presented to the DESI people, there were no conclusions about how we would go about it. If we, if we do that, if other communities come back, want to rejoin or not leave, it will be up to the school committee to determine what the conditions would be. Yes.
Jeff? The key idea is that, as we know, the financial structure makes it almost impossible politically for a community to come and join the school because of the fact that they don't have to pay the going rate. So if we can make progress on that key issue, then it falls to our, you know, then people will be incentivized to join us, and we can determine which mixture of communities is best for the district. But as long as there's this artificial gap that is completely created by state regulations, it's going to be very hard, even if a town wants to do the right thing, it's going to be very hard for the population to say, "We have this big gap, well, we're a big advantage from the state for us by not remaining part of the district." If you, the argument was that that's unfair, you eliminate the gap, then we're all happy and in our ballpark as to what we want to do.
And on the other side of that, the member communities are put in a position of covering part of the cost for the communities that are sending kids on and out of district. And that's not fair to our communities.
Pam?
I guess I would just want to add to that is that it really behooves us to be able to be extremely clear what the benefits are for a town to join.
Well, we have some work to do on that, there's no question about that. We also won't be hearing from them, we probably will be hearing from them sometime early fall. It's not like they're going to turn this around and we're going to get a letter from them next week. I think that's what they said to us.
Right, right, I think so. I mean, at least, I mean, one of the options, I mean, one of the things we, I put in front of them was, they could at least put the language of the state law basically inside the regulations. And they're going to have a first draft of new regulations out and presented to the board in September. And I was encouraging them to include it in that first draft and didn't, didn't get any commitment on that, but, but, but they did say, if it's not there, you, that you can use the public comment period to, to make that case.
What is the Belmont School Committee going to be doing? You said something about them.
That the superintendent talked to town meeting last week and said that the school committee was going to create a couple of task force for work over the summer, and one of them was going to be the Minuteman question. And when I met with the superintendent this morning, I said it would really be great if the charge of that group would be, you know, sort of to authorize them to start to have, to have conversations with the superintendent and the school home committee members about it. Just so it's not like, you know, well, sort of casual things, but for them to say that we, that we want to start conversations about whether, whether there's a path by which Belmont Town Meeting at, at a special town meeting next fall would vote on whether or not to rescind its notice of withdrawal, which would then bring the matter to the, to the Minuteman School Home Committee. And, and it would take a unanimous vote of the Minuteman School Home Committee to be able to, be able to accept that. But that's, but that's the, that's one path that is within the regional agreement. But, but, but in general, you know, I don't want that town meeting vote without everyone being clear what is being proposed to sort of, to answer Ford's, Ford's question. You know, what is, what is the, what is the exact procedure if the policy is everyone comes in on a fair, you know, on the same, same footing? That's got to be clear beforehand.
Anything else to say? Okay. Yes, Alice.
For when?
What, I'm not sure.
That has to be clear before when?
Before, before the Belmont Town Meeting is asked to vote on a warrant. And so, I mean, I, I wouldn't, I would want to know, I mean, I would want to advise the town meeting about what the thinking of this, of this committee is.
And what are they planning to?
They don't have it scheduled yet, but they're thinking about early November.
I would, it would, we would, they would need to give us an opportunity to discuss what the parameters were.
Exactly. And that's, and that's the conversation that could start informally this summer and then go on a more formal basis.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Are you moving down to the enrollment?
I will bring to attention the school committee House Bill 70. Under my goal number two, it says no update, but during our meeting yesterday, I was informed of some items within House Bill 70, which I've been pursuing, trying to learn more about. And I've also spoken to the MAVA officers about, one of them is, has to do with increasing the choice rate to vocational, for vocational schools to 15,000 or foundation. The other item had to do with just a general increase in Chapter 78 to vocational technical schools. So I'll update you on that as I am updated on it. But House Bill 70, seems like there's a lot more in it than just the changes. Enrollment Goal Number Four on pages 20 through, 22 through 26 in your packet. Basically, we have 189, a very solid number, because that's the number of families that have submitted all their enrollment materials so that their students can be enrolled in the fall. And there's an additional 14 or 15 students that may, that are being contacted to finalize their status. We did, I don't know if we talked about this at the last meeting, because I was in Ireland or something. But as of June 1st, people who didn't have their materials in were put on a waiting list. So that kind of sent some shock waves through some of our member district families and communities, because that's never happened. So people were driving things in during the day and dropping them off to get...
And there are a lot of steps to it. It's not just three questions and you're done. They had to break, as we're learning at the policy committee, there's a lot of steps to that. So if they got it all in, they hustled and worked hard.
So as Jim said, it's a pretty strong enrollment. I still believe we're going to be around 200 when we open the doors September 3rd. And that concludes the superintendent's...
Any questions about that? All right. Turn the page to...
Oh, Goal Five.
Yeah, Goal Five.
RFP, the, Kevin may want to chime in on this one, too. UMass Donahue Institute, we're meeting with them tomorrow again at 11:30 to discuss reissuing the RFP to a broader audience. We've since identified, I would say, 30 or 40 potential bidders rather than the half a dozen or so we had at the last time. So we will keep you informed of that. And I don't know, Kevin, if you wanted to add something to it, but we are going to, as you know, we weren't satisfied, we had really no legitimate bids last time.
Are you happy with the work the institute is doing?
No, I am not, and they know that.
Okay.
So this is their last chance to get it right.
All right.
So my ears are getting red, I can tell already. So that...
Thank you, Carrie.
Jack?
Well, it's important, it's an important, well, important to know.
Call anytime.
What would be our alternative if we didn't have a group like Donahue? Is there other resources that we...
There are other resources that we could explore, but I think they have a better sense of what our expectations are.
Now they do, you think? Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay, we'll give you a whack.
I can confirm that they have a better expectation of what we, what we're looking for.
And it's sort of their last chance to get it right?
We made it very clear that we were more, less concerned about process and more concerned about outreach.
Oh, yeah.
And I think we got bogged down on process unnecessarily. And I think their focus has been more on outreach, and as Dr. Bo Quilling said, given the number of leads that we're looking at now and some of the networks that are out there that weren't pursued earlier, I think we'll have a more robust process. And I do think, although we did lose some time, that given where the athletic facility field construction project is in the schedule, I think we can make that up.
Could we hear about this follow-up the next, at the July meeting?
We'll keep the committee posted, yes, as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Comments? All right. Moving on to the principal, you finished, Ed?
I'm off, son.
Okay. Moving, thanks to Carrie. Moving on to the principal report, Jack, about dual enrollment program?
Thanks, Dave. The dual enrollment document that you see before you has been in our program of studies for years. I'm asking that we move it to the student parent handbook and make it an actual policy. We've tightened up some language around that. When I say "we," myself, Amy Peralta, George Clement, and some of our guidance folks, just tightened up some language to make it a little bit more efficient. And I'd like to move it to our student parent handbook for the fall.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second? You got that, Julia? Okay. Any questions for Jack or comments about it? I think it's good to see it going in the handbook personally, but then the dual enrollment program, I think, is a really great opportunity for Minuteman students. So I'm glad we're doing that. And yes, there was one girl who, who got, who was enrolled in both, it was, got her diploma, what a certification at the, whatever, at the graduation ceremony. This is really a wonderful opportunity to thank you and good to see it and publicize it. Okay. All in favor? All opposed? None? It's 8-0-0? Thank you, Jack, on that.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Thank you, Dave. Beginning on page 29, you'll see FY '19 budget transfers that are being proposed. These are the transfers that we do at the end of the fiscal year to try and, to make sure, based on our projections for the expenditure budget, that all of our function code subtotals are in a positive position. So when we close out the budget, we won't be showing any function code deficits. I'm seeking approval for $114,000 that we've identified as a funding source that professional salaries in the information technology. You may recall that that was a, we had a position open at the end of last school year due to one of a technology director moving to another district, and those funds were not committed throughout the year. So I'd ask that we just allocate it between the five line items that are listed on page 29.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second? Any questions? Comments? Okay. All in favor? 8-0-0?
Thank you. A second action that was not included in your packet but handed out tonight is a memo regarding a fund account transfer to community education to transfer to fund the summer school deficit. You may recall at the April 9th school committee meeting, I reported that we would not be moving forward with our summer programs because of the construction of the school building project. And we were projecting at that time a deficit of about $140,000 as a result of that decision. Within the district budget, we do allocate $100,000 of district-funded support for the community education program. So we did commit that $100,000 to offset the $140,000. And since that time, that was a preliminary number, since that time, we've been tracking that. And even with the, with the application of the $100,000 rather than $40,000 being projected as a deficit, we're looking at being closer to $60,000. There's still some data that we still have to account for. We're still, you know, picking up May activity on the revenue side as well as June activity. So that may be a conservative number, but I'm asking so that we do not get negatively impacted in our E and D calculation for the school committee to transfer the sum of $60,000 from our district retiree health insurance account to the summer school account, Fund 11.
This doesn't appear in the agenda, correct?
It's under the budget transfers. It wasn't included in the packet.
Does it include under there? And you have, it's on the table, you see it on the table? Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second?
So, I mean, so what, what did you mean by saying, saying, saying we're doing this not to, to affect E and D?
Because if we take no action, that Fund 11, community education, would be projected to have, right now, a $60,000 deficit, which would be a reduction on our E and D calculation.
Did I see a question over here? I'm sorry. Any, any other questions or comments? Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
8-0-0? Okay, thank you, Kevin. Moving along?
Thank you, yes. On page 32, you'll note a memo from, to the school, for the school committee from Mr. Gamble that had some minor amendments to the OPEB trust agreement that was discussed at the finance subcommittee at the last meeting. There were some small technical issues that Jim may want to talk to, with the expectation, hopefully, that after discussion, we could move forward and vote the authorization of the OPEB trust agreement.
This is simply just to add a couple more sentences to clarify that even though, even though we have a sole trustee who's the district treasurer, we have an agreement that in some places talks, talks about a board of trustees, and we're leaving it there just in case some future school committee may want to go to a different model that's allowed under state law. But just to make clear that board of trustees means the district treasurer for, for the current version. The other, when we, when we move the trust agreement, we just also just want to put the right date, you know, June, June 11th rather than March 29th.
Does the, does this revised trust agreement we have in our packet include this change?
Yes.
Okay, so when we vote on this, we're voting for the second reading? Did we voted a first reading?
No, we, no, we voted a first reading of the investment policy statement, and that's our next vote. This is, this is simply, this is, this is the trust, this is finally setting up the OPEB trust after five years.
Okay, so and that'll be our vote tonight as well, right? To accept the BMS, okay?
Yes.
Carrie? Do, do remember that the rules changed at the state level in the interim. So what Jack had proposed and was being discussed by the finance subcommittee when you were still on it, Jack?
Yes, thousands of years ago.
Was working under a much more complicated set of guidelines?
I read it, it's straightforward.
And this, the rules changed about a year ago, and I will say, Concord, for instance, just went through a similar change where they made the finance director the sole trustee with some reporting responsibilities. It just makes a great deal more sense in, in a case where there's very little transactional, you know, the, the numbers and the liability eventually get quite large, but the transactional activity is pretty sparse.
Yeah, I mean, the notion is that the OPEB trust fund is a segregated fund, but, but it's not going to spend money on its own. It's going to transfer money back to the operating budget to pay for any current... It's going to transfer money back to the operating budget to pay for any current-year OPEB-related expenses that the school committee asks for.
Kevin, you heard the comment from Jim about changing the date in the first paragraph?
Duly noted.
Okay. So that would be, that would be part of what we're voting on?
Right, so...
Yes, Alice?
Jim, can I attest that I have been obsessed with the not leaving, and Kevin too, with not leaving a future school committee with a misunderstanding of any type with regard to some kind of sort of catch-22 that's built in? The issue that I've been interested in is number 5.9, the question of whether the school committee can in fact change the composition of the trustees to a board from the one person, and it says that the district committee may in its discretion change the composition of the trustees and then at, as provided in Article 17, comma, without agreement of the then-serving trustee. So if you read 17.2.2, the duties and liabilities of trustees cannot be substantially changed without their written consent. If 5.9 supersedes 17.2.2, then I think we're, we don't, we haven't hamstrung future school committees, but I'm not qualified to know that.
You have not, you're saying?
I just know, I don't know that, the answer. I'm not that person. I'm, I am just a person who notices inconsistencies, like they just jump out and hit me in the nose.
Carrie?
It's not changing the duties and saying they're not yours. I'm not in charge of this anymore. Okay, well, that's, that's the thing that I became obsessed with. I'm convinced that it's probably not an issue, but I'm...
Any response or reaction to that, Kevin?
I just had corresponded with Alice on this and felt 5.9 superseded Article 17.
All right.
That's what I pointed to in terms of that, of the concern, and I would think that that language is fairly clear in my mind.
All right. I think I called for a vote, if I'm not mistaken, but...
So, do you have a, do you have a motion or not?
Did I call?
Do you have a motion?
Asked for a motion, I'm...
For which wall are we having a motion on?
On B.
Open, the, the trust, the trust agreement.
So you want to, have the school committee to approve that, right?
Right. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Okay, none. Very good. Any other question or comments? All in favor?
Treated OPEB.
8-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Now, moving on to the, the investment policy statement, which is a policy, that would become, for a second, this is a second reading, I believe, for...
Yes.
So it's, it's a policy, policy statement, it goes in the policy manual. Do I hear a motion to approve, and then we'll discuss it? Second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. To approve the authorization of the OPEB fund investment policy statement as presented. Any question or comments? Okay, all in favor? 8-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to, under D, to authorize the extension of the school bus transportation contract? Then we'll have a discussion about that. Do I, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Kevin?
The, this is the last option year on the contract. We will be putting the renewal contract out to bid. We're going to do it earlier than we have in the past. We're going to do it in October. We're modifying it based upon some suggestions we received from a transportation consultant that we worked with on this last spring, in terms of the term and some other features that may make it more, that may make the RFP more attractive to other bus companies. I say that with caution, because there are not, there does not seem to be a lot of activity when it comes to school bus transportation RFPs. They seem to be, it seems to be very limited response regardless of whichever school district you, you talk to. But we are going to try to see if there are some things we could do to make this more appealing. The last time I put this out, I reached out to a number of bus companies. We'll go through that exercise again to see if we can try and generate more competition, but it's, it's a tough market.
Good luck with that one.
Thank you, sir.
Any question or comment? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? None? 8-0-0? Okay. Moving on to, to E, approval to authorize the extension of the renewal option on the energy house lease. Do I hear a motion? Second? Discussion.
If I may.
Kevin, you want to talk, yeah, would you talk about that?
Please, yes. This is the, this is the, the space that the Mass Association of School Superintendent resides in.
You all know where that is, by the way?
Right, right on the corner here. And given where we are with the project construction schedule, with the demolition beginning in late fall, the MASs will need to vacate that, that, that space in order for us to move forward with that particular phase of the project. We've been working with MASs on a transition plan to see if they would be interested in moving at the space currently, 20 Mill Street, which is currently occupied by Gilbane. What will happen is, Skansker is located at 16 Mill and Gilbane's currently located at 20. When we get into the demolition, demolition phase of the project, both companies are going to reduce their onsite workforce substantially so that they can both reside in 16 Mill Street during the demolition phase. That'll allow us to move MASs into 20 Mill Street, and we'd like to do that under this option year. Now, I've been working with the executive director, along with the superintendent and our facilities coordinator, about some of the needs that would be over there. At the last finance subcommittee meeting, the finance subcommittee authorized the expenditure of about $20,000 that we could do for paint, carpeting, and some plumbing work, because prior to Gilbane being there, it was, it was a childcare center, and we have some plumbing that needs to be lifted up, I guess you could say. So, so we're planning on doing that over the summer. There may be some other, other needs that we're, that we're working on with MASs, and we'd have to talk about how that would work and what their willingness is to commit to that, some of those needs. And, and that gets into the conversation of how long the, the lease ought to be, and I'm working with them on that, and will report back to the, to the school committee. But I think in the short run, what I would like to do is get this option year exercised so that we can start this move and get them more into a more permanent, a more permanent space, and, and continue the, the strong relationship we've had with them as a presence here at the, on campus. So I'd ask, I'd ask for this, for your approval on this option.
Kevin, were you able to find out whether they would pay real estate taxes on it?
Well, we've had some conversations about it, you know, whether it's still considered an educational use, since they're a professional organization supporting public education But we haven't definitively got that answer yet, but we, we view it that way, because it, it is an educational purpose.
So you've raised it with Lincoln?
I have not yet. We're still...
You're not going to raise it with Lincoln? But at some, at some point, or, I mean, I don't, I don't know if you should or not, I just...
I'll speak with our attorneys about it.
Okay, very good. And if you would let us know what you find out, I'd appreciate that.
I doubt it's going to be taxing.
And you'll let us know? Okay. Ford, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I assume Gilbane has some responsibilities to restore the building the way it was.
Yes, yep. They've been, yeah, very cooperative about asking us what our needs are in terms of what they've done, what they want to keep, and what, what they need to change.
Okay. Any other question or comment? All in favor? Any opposed? 8-0-0? Kevin, disposal of unsold surplus property, do I hear a motion? Second? Discussion, Kevin?
Lot of welding equipment because of, with the FY19 skills grant, we've committed a lot of that funding towards upgrading the, the welders in the, in the welding shop, so there's, there are some welding equipment that we'll be selling. The rest of it is just some miscellaneous items in terms of, that we've seen in the, some of the science areas when it comes to microscopes and bioreactors and all that other stuff. Well, and then we picked that up too, yes, so...
Any question or comment? All in favor? Any opposed? Your hand was up right there. 8-0-0? Okay. Do I hear a motion to authorize removal of furniture as described? Second? Okay.
Removal.
Any questions or comments? All right. All in favor? All opposed? None? 8-0-0? Okay, moving on to subcommittee reports. To which?
Subcommittee.
The subcommittee report? Sure. Policy Subcommittee, Alice?
Just so you know, Amy Perot is the administration member of the Policy Task Force, which is great, and Jim Gamble and Dave Horton are also working on policy. We spent three meetings in May talking about admissions policy revisions required to match DESI regs and new changes to exploratory and revisions to address the sort of new circumstances of having a potential waiting list. So, one, one of the considerations has to do with, if you have more students than you have spaces, how do you allocate those slots? We're calling it slot allocation. And we talked about ways that we could address that that would be fair, in other words, to make sure that none of the member towns that are paying for the building are frozen out of the school because of, you know, huge tsunami of students from others, other towns or something. How do you kind of make a policy that does that without really tying down the district too much on how they do their admissions? And so, the administration came up with a sort of, a wave of, an idea of a wave of applica, waves of applications, two waves of applications, and Jim Gamble devised a method for allocating a minimum number of slots to each member town to be awarded the highest-scoring students from those communities. So the, the admissions committee actually kind of goes through a, a set way of grading the students, and then they list them in order, these are the top students, and so forth. The member town students obviously get accepted first, but there's, what we are talking about and what we need to really understand from the school committee, whether you think this is an interesting idea, not to vote on it, but just to talk about it, is to take a four-year rolling average of the enrollment as a basis for a calculation, and then taking 25% of that number from each of the member towns, and we've got a copy of this at your place on page two. You'll see how it works out for each town currently, with a minimum number of spots of four students and a percentage average of 25% using this four-year rolling average in the current moment. So what that would mean is, a small number of students would be, for the first wave of applications that occurred before March 1st, where the kid had finished all of the work they have to do to apply and been interviewed and everything else, they've applied by March 1st, that those students, this slot allocation method would apply to that group. And then after that had occurred, the second wave of students, everybody goes back into the pot. Then you start looking at the rest of the, the in-district students and the out-of-district students. And so, that is what we are talking about, and we wondered if we're missing anything.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just a clarification, in my mind, in terms of the official policy, we're talking about every year, the, the admissions committee coming up with a, with a, with a schedule, and we're not saying exactly what that schedule is, and it could change from year to year, and, and, but, but we went through sort of what the formula could look like and make sense for the first year, or, or, or...
Right.
Or for the current, current things, but it's not...
This table would not be in the policy.
It's not putting in the numbers, but it's just saying that there is some table.
The admissions committee, by the way, that's a staff committee, it's not, it's not part of the policy, and that, and apparently, if I'm correct, Amy, the admissions committee comprises staff, but it could, depending on whatever, the composition could change from, it's not a static committee as far as who's on it, is that correct?
I think the superintendent would sign it.
Yeah, right. Superintendent would, appropriate.
So the actual language that would eventually go into the policy would be more that there would be a table created by the admissions director for, and brought to the school committee each year. This is an example of how it could work. So, the question is, does anybody see any huge problem with that? Is there anybody who objects strongly to that idea of having, you know, for example, Dover?
If we got four students, that'd be ecstatic.
But, but having some reserved slots for the initial wave of applications to make sure that all of the member towns are given an opportunity, does that sound like a reasonable thing to work with? I don't see anybody...
This is done annually.
Yeah. Because the circumstances are going to change, you know?
It's not in the policy, it's...
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just how they, they would create this and bring it forward to the school committee each year.
It's actually an incentive to the towns, I think.
Yes. Yes, it is.
Well, as you think about it, if you have a different, well, more feelings, different feelings, whatever, let, let Alice know through Julia what your impressions are, and they'll get to the, to our, our task force.
Yeah, if you have a brainstorm of something really, we don't want to miss, and send it forward. We, just so you know kind of what we've been doing with the admissions policy, so here's the version we got today with some notes. We got to page five, and fortunately, this group of people is all really interested in language and ideas, the 30,000-foot view, there are probably the 50,000-foot view, and also the one-and-a-half-foot view, so we've got that covered.
We're a very friendly little task force.
Was there any of the draft left when you were finished?
Not a lot, but we've, we've only gotten to page five. But what we're trying to do is to clear it up so that, you know, the parent and student looking at it can actually figure out what they're supposed to do in a relatively straightforward way. You know, they read it and they go, oh, that makes sense, not, huh? Like, wait a minute, what am I supposed to do? So it's, it's that that we're really looking at.
Right.
So...
Clarity and also comprehensiveness.
Yeah, just make it more user-friendly.
Right.
And so, the other things we've been looking at are, let's see, the OPEB policy, we looked at that. The naming policy is on hold because of this, and then we're looking at procedures. So currently, the policy manual is online, but it's online as one big document. MASs has this system, which you've all probably been to, where you can look up other school districts' policies. So we're talking with MASs to try to understand whether they can guarantee timeliness in their uploading of documents to their system. And that's very important, because when the various reviews come through the school to look at, you know, CPR, whatever it is, they, sometimes we make a requirement that you update something right away, and we have to be able to do that, and we don't really understand deep within MASs how that works, but we're getting that information from them. And then if it seems really attractive, we'll bring it back to the school committee.
Any questions for Alice, the committee? Okay. Thank you, Alice, and, and again, that invitation, if you have comments about anything you've heard tonight or whatever, let Alice know and the committee know through Julia. Let's do enrollment next, and then you can be on for the next two, Ford.
Okay, just very, very quickly. The enrollment task force met, but I just want to say, earlier in the meeting today, Ed announced that the enrollment for the incoming class is 189 to 200, and I don't think we reacted at all. We've gotten very blasé. Now, this is really exciting. Now, this is really exciting. And I, you know, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that.
Reach to 189 or the possible 200?
Well, you know, that's exactly how the Enrollment Task Force looks at it.
When we reach the 200, I will give them a standing.
Okay, right now, we can just sit down and clap. So, but like Ford, you know, the Enrollment Task Force did not want to get too, too excited. And we're not. And decided that, no, we still need to look at our in-district enrollment and that we can't look at one good year as a trend and that we can't take our foot off the pedal, let up on the gas, whatever.
Pedal to the metal.
Pedal to the metal. So, that we want to continue to be meeting, that we still see our role as continuing to work with the administration, to review the action plans, the progress on the action plans, to be making sure that there are the proper resources to be carrying them out. We particularly, you know, over the coming year, want to be looking at, you know, ensuring that the message is on target. There are a couple of specific initiatives that the Committee would like to do a little follow-up with. One is parent liaisons. You know, we're real excited to have them in place, but we want to really be looking at, how is it working? Is there anything else that they need that we need to be doing and really have a chance to be talking with, you know, to be working with the administration on how that program is working? And the second is, once, if you remember, we spent a lot of time this year talking about the minimum requirements for access that were, we would like from middle schools. And once that document goes out, to making sure that for each school, we have a plan for the proper follow-up. And I think that's it.
The only thing I would ask the Enrollment Subcommittee to consider too is how they might be helpful to MTI's recruitment and marketing.
Well, you know, that actually was a question I meant to be asking earlier, is how that works and how separate, together, integrated, or not that is.
Well, I think it needs to be more integrated and the Enrollment Task Force can be a conduit for that integration.
Okay.
And I've talked with Nancy about that as well.
Sounds good.
Jim? Yeah, just in, just in the, let's, let's have some enthusiasm point of view. I mean, if, if we have a waitlist and, and there are more than 200 kids every year, you know, I, I can go back to these non-member towns and say, that waitlist is going to be 100% non-member town kids, you know, because, because, because our, because the nine-member towns are gonna, you know, clock in around 150 and, and that there's going to be room for them. But, but the next 25, 30 seats, that's up for grabs. And, and it's, and it's all, all, and it's, and, and the burden of getting in or not is going to fall 100% on, on the non-member towns. And that's a, that's a, that's a good message for me to carry back.
Carrie?
This is, this is also a comment I made at the meeting, having gone to one of the sessions for parents that George and, I'm sorry, first name--
Maggie.
Maggie, who was still quite new and did really well. The dialogue they had, the question that the parents were asking were excellent questions. The answers were comprehensive, credible, you know, anchored with, with real stories and so forth. The disappointing part was the number of parents that were at that meeting. And that's where, where the marketing and outreach comes. I think the parents that are there are the ones whose kids had the, have the applications in. But so many more should have been there. That's, that was what I was sorry about. Despite the, the great results overall, it's getting them to a place where they can listen.
Thank you, Pam, and thank you, Committee, as well. Any, any questions for, for Pam or comments? Okay. Move on to Ford, School Building Committee.
Basically, we're on tom, time and on budget.
Finally.
Finally. I've, we've never wavered.
I know. I'm kidding.
However, it's sort of like enrollment. Pressure is on and they're working hard. And our next meeting, which will really be our last meeting with this group before the school opens, will be sort of a major presentation on a couple of things, how we're doing, progressing building-wise. And it's got to look pretty darn good at that time. And secondly, we'll give you a time schedule of what's going on over the summer. The faculty and teachers received that today from Ed. But we will have that for you and exactly what's going on over the summer. So, I think we'll save everything till then because it's sort of your last time where you'll see them in this mode.
So, we will hear that at the July meeting?
The July meeting.
At our meeting? Okay.
We took about 40 teachers over there today.
Yeah, today, we had about, we took 40 teachers over there, but the entire staff was there where the schedule was given to them. They were able to ask questions. And then we did a tour of the school for about less than an hour, probably. And some of the faculty members had never been over there at that point. So, this was, this was good.
Nancy Hool went over too, by the way. Nancy Hool went, visited too.
And, you know, it's going to happen. So, I think our next meeting would be a great meeting, mainly to have a team here because you might not see them as a whole for a while.
Wow. Well, that would be great. Thank you, Ford. Any questions?
They are going to be around, incidentally, because we talked about a punch list, and that can go on for a long period of time. But the whole team will not be here.
Anything for Ford? Okay. Thank you, Ford. And now, moving on to superintendent, superintendent negotiations evaluation, and Jennifer's not able to be here, so Ford, you're speaking for her.
What I'm going to ask is, is that we take that out of order and do the minutes first and then have that discussion afterwards. So, those people that want to leave can leave and do that.
Pam, do you want to move the minutes? And if you hear any, anyone have any, move the minutes, then we'll see if there are any comments.
And let me just note that the minutes are for May 14th, not April 9th on the agenda. I have a, I'm going to move that we approve the minutes for May 14th with a couple of amendments.
Sure, please.
On page five. On six B, for it's an approval for the first reading of the OPEB trust agreement, change that to discussion of the OPEB trust agreement. And on the title for C, to change that to say approval for, for first reading of the OPEB fund investment policy. The vote does reflect that it is first reading.
Okay.
So, it's those two titles there.
Were there any other edits?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Edit.
Yeah.
Do you want to make the motion first for the, approve the minutes with those two changes?
So, you don't have, you don't have a change?
I don't have a change. I have a comment.
So, I moved that we approved the minutes as amended.
Second? Okay. Yes.
Okay, so, I'm going back in my time machine now to all those discussions we had about how much detail should be in the minutes. I don't want to bring up like difficult memories, but I do have one suggestion. And, and here's the suggestion. In the minutes, in a lot of places, it says, discussion ensued. Now, I'm in favor of not having too much detail in the minutes. But I think we need a little bit more. And here's the reason why we need a little bit more. On some of these items, which seem very straightforward now, in the future, you don't know, it could be, become controversial. And when we have discussion of these items, there are usually a few themes that we discuss. Now, we don't need the discussion of all we said about those themes. But by listing the main themes that were part of that discussion, we let people know that we really did discuss it thoroughly. I think that that's important to do. So, I would like to see a little bit more detail. I'm not going to, you know, make any specific suggestions here. A little bit more detail in the minutes so that, that it says, instead of just discussion ensued, we have at least the main ideas that were brought out so that the public will understand that we discussed them for future reference, to know that we were completing our deliberations. Because if you have a meeting like today in which it's eight to zero and everything, they might think you're going to get it having kind of a rubber stamp here. But if you listen to the kind of questions we asked, I think that they're pretty complete.
Yeah, if, I think what we've seen before is issues raised during the discussion covered. And then there'd be sort of a, you know, just a few words describing--
That's exactly right.
Example.
So, in the future, they should include the main themes of the discussion so that people looking back will say, God, these people really are doing their job. They're worth every cent we're paying them.
You don't want to move from there to a transcript by any means. It doesn't need to identify--
We've tried that route. It was ugly.
Yep. Don't need that.
It was ugly.
On side of the table, if you need that.
Yes, Alice, sorry.
It's actually a requirement that they contain the substance of the discussion.
Okay. Any other question or comment about that? All in favor? None opposed? Eight, zero, zero. Okay. All right. The last, the last item before we would adjourn would be on the superintendent's negotiation evaluation subcommittee report, as I said, from Ford, because Jennifer's not here. And we would review, we will, we will now review the, the comments that people made in their, in the evaluation and also to offer Ed the opportunity to respond to anything or if he had any, any comments about what people had, had written in the evaluation. And then, following that, we will take a vote on whether to approve the salary for the superintendent, which will be, we'll hear a recommendation from the, from the evaluation committee as to what that salary, what the salary increment should be, if any. But we'll, we'll wait for that until after we review the comments that people wrote. So, does anyone have any, any questions about or comments you'd like to make about the evaluation and the, the comments you read? Yes?
I have a few comments.
Okay.
The first one is, I want to thank you for all this wonderful reading material in which we got to read the whole procedure for this and all the things that we did and didn't do in this process that they recommend. I enjoyed reading through it. Now, I'm subject to a similar system being as a teacher, and I know the strengths and weaknesses of it as an evaluation tool. This is a prescribed evaluation tool and it does have strengths and weaknesses. And there is one aspect, when I was filling out the evaluation, there was one thing that annoyed me a little bit. And the thing that annoyed me is that when you're doing, when you're setting a goal, what some people can do is they can play the system and create goals that are easy to achieve. They ask you to do SMARTGROVES, goals that are, you know, somehow measurable. And you can always make your evaluation look good in terms of the goals that you choose, okay, in your discussions. Now, the, the thing is, is that the superintendent and the School Committee has chosen to put down a bunch of really hard goals. Goals that are unlikely to be achieved and some of which are very hard to directly measure. And in a sense, that's a little bit not what the system asks you to do, but I think that it's a, a much, a better way of doing it. So, I was doing this, the superintendent's evaluation, I couldn't give him, you know, the highest mark in each category. I said, well, there's a reason for this. The reason for it is that he chose a hard goal that may not be obtainable. And so, and so, so how do you acknowledge that as opposed to a, a group that may choose, you know, very easy goals that are easy to measure and easy to achieve? So, the, I don't want to change our system. I like the system the way it is. I like choosing hard goals that are a reach and really match the needs of the community. But I think that maybe it would be good to just have a, to add, without spending a lot of time on it, adding, you know, one more question, one more comment placed on the evaluation, kind of in, how do you feel overall or some sort of wording? So, you can kind of say, yeah, he didn't meet all the goals, but gee, I'm pretty impressed overall with, if this, if that was the outcome, like to me it was this time, I'm pretty impressed overall. I'm really impressed at the kind of goals that were laid down. So, that's kind of the one thing I was not able to put in this.
Like a general comment?
Just a general comment. And I just like to be able to do that so I can comment also on the quality of the goals as well as the level of achievement.
Yes.
Yeah. Last year and this, although this is way better than we've seen in some of the past years, with, with the choices that were there, I find myself wanting to say, he exceeded on the effort side, even though the, the letter of the goal wasn't achieved. You know, that, that it turned out to be tougher than it might have been anticipated or there's logs in the road that just weren't on the map. And, you know, sometimes the, in, in this case, some of the things where, where my comment reflects that Ed, instead of working just to the benefit of this specific piece for Minute Man, he's broadened it out to, to look at the overall well-being of, of Volktec education in, in the state. That's a good thing, even though the, the specifics of the goal were not met. And so, I think I'm coming down in the same place as I wish there were something that could sort of separate the attainment of the letter of the goal versus satisfaction with the effort that was made or the skills that were brought to the task.
Ford, Pam and I were the only ones that were at the, that are here tonight that were at the meeting. And tell me if I, what I'm saying is what we discussed, but it falls in right here. There are two goals in here that I found very difficult. And the first one was the campus development. And we talk about specifically athletic fields. I would have much rather just seen, as I was doing it the other day, when I was doing it, campus development, period. You know, for the Lexington side of the campus, rather than saying specifically what it is. And I think that's what we're all saying. Because when I graded Ed, I gave him a failing grade on that. However, I know how much the effort was that, that he and in particular, and Kevin, had put into it, which I would give him exceeded. And so, I think that was a problem with that. So, the other one is, is when we talk about, we talked about increasing the district, working to help increase the district. Well, we specifically put a town down. Well, I think that was--
And the MOU.
That was, and a MOU, that was the wrong thing to do in retrospect, when I'm filling this out, not when we're setting a goal, is I would have rather said, you know, the effort that was made in increasing the district and finding mechanisms to be able to do that. And then, I would have given him an exceeded or whatever, but it was, it was very difficult. So, I think when we do goals for ourselves and for the superintendent, we do just what the three of us have said, and I think that's what we were saying as a committee, let's try not to be too, too specific. But, you know, the effort needs to go into campus development in that case, and the effort needs to go in, in finding ways to expand the district. And we've talked about that tonight, ways to expand the district. So, that's, that would be my remark in filling this out.
Okay. Jeff?
Just going to kind of object slightly to the word effort, because you can give a lot of effort, you're just not very good at your job. So, here we have effort and talent. In other words, we saw not just that there was a lot of effort, that there was, but there was a lot of talent--
Yeah.
And skill--
Creativity.
And creativity thrown at it. And having a goal that the direct success is not achieved is not a problem as long as you understand that at this School Committee, for this superintendent, we're going to give goals that are extremely hard, that cannot be done necessarily in one year, and that may not be obtained. It's an aspirate, some of them are really aspirational. And that kind of goes against the idea of a SMART goal. And I just want to make sure that somehow in this, we have that. So, not just like widening the, making it a little bit more general so that, you know, it cannot be a specific failure because one exact thing didn't happen, but to somehow get in there the fact that we have a very high standard for the goals, they don't fit directly into the SMART model because they're, some of them are really aspirational and very hard, as well as saying, yes, there's a lot of effort and skill. And I wish I had that general comment as one of the ways. Obviously, we can rework, be a little more careful when we choose the goals, but they're always going to be perhaps a little bit beyond a SMART goal, which is supposed to be measurable and sometimes they are obtainable. And sometimes they're neither measurable nor obtainable in the year that you're evaluating the superintendent.
Alice?
I also found it really very difficult to fill it out, partly because some of the wording was different between the original document and the stuff that was online. For two of the goals, the wording had changed. And so, I found it very difficult to associate the evidence with the thing that was online and so forth. And I-- the evidence with the thing that was online and so forth, and I just got hamstrung. However, I think actually one of the problems with our goal-setting process has to do with timing, in the same way that, you know, well, first of all, the department requires that we do the evaluation at a particular time, and so, we're stuck there. But in the same way that, like, the town meetings occur in the least charitable time of the year, instead of having town meeting in November or something, they always have it in spring, when people are not in the mood, I think the same problem occurs with our goal-setting, that we do it in September, when the train has left the station, and it's, you know, a bullet train going really fast through the school year, and we really should be looking at the goals in the summer, when you're not in this panic mode that school has already started, the October one thing is going to happen, and then it's almost time for the budget, and, you know, "Oh, my God, where did the year go?" So, I think we really need to be looking at the goals in the summer, and that would kind of solve part of our problem with goal-setting. We have in the past spent, you know, three or four school committee meetings, talking about whether or not something was a SMART goal, which I don't want to go through again. That's a nightmare. But we could maybe change our process to think about it earlier, like, right now is when we should be thinking about it.
So, an agenda item for July?
Right.
Yes.
When the committee met, I mean, that was one of the things that we did talk about, that we need to be more thoughtful and give it a little more time, both, you know, for goals for the superintendent, but also the goals for the school committee, because I think, you know, we also had that discussion about how difficult these were to evaluate.
Yes, Ford.
I agree with both comments. I think July, perhaps, but I think you need a lead-in before July, so, you know, you've talked about it as a committee superintendent. I think you want the, I think you want the goals to match up between the school committee and superintendent. Does that mean, therefore, that maybe we should have an August meeting, where you're actually finalizing the goal? And I know how difficult some of those things are, but I agree. I think you have to go into September with the goals known and approved.
I think we could take that under advisement, as they say, and think about that. Since, as you know, July, we vote on set of officers, it is possible that the officers could meet during the summer with Ed to get, and, oh, I thought that was a spider, a bug, to meet during the summer to formulate some goals, and we can talk about having an August meeting, but if not, if that doesn't seem feasible, for whatever reason, to be sort of ready to present things at the September, ready to present goals at the September meeting, drafts of them anyway, certainly wouldn't be formalized, but we can talk about it. We can see how we do with that. But those are all interesting suggestions and good suggestions. Anything else? Any other comments about--
I get it, I had a comment.
Oh, you did.
Yeah.
You do.
Well, no, I'm listening to the comments, taking notes. I have similar feelings about the process. It's very prescribed, and I think about what's not, what I'm not getting feedback on, that I would like to get feedback on in this process. And I think about leadership versus management. You know, these goals are very transactional in some ways, but in order to achieve them, you have to have transformational competence and luck, and a lot of other people helping you. Like, one of the things that you may not know that we do here at Minuteman is, after the goals are decided upon, my entire executive team looks at the goals and incorporates those superintendent goals into their goals, so that it's not just the superintendent working on these things. Obviously, it's not. It's the leadership team. And that's not captured in this very well at all. And so, the other thing that I like feedback on is aspects of leadership that aren't captured in this either. For instance, the things that are important to me in this job, that I love to do, is mentor others. I love developing a vision. The whole aspect of connecting with kids, how you connect with kids, is like nowhere in here, and I spend--